Brooks. Lowery. Avent.
Present.
Chairman Whaley.
Present.
We have nine present.
All right, we have a quorum. All right, it's possible to join the meeting in two ways via the designated email account, voc.e-mail@shelbycountytn.gov, or via phone at 901-222-1234. Madam Parliament, can you really read the rest of the rule?
Members of the public who desire to address the county commission shall request permission by completing an appearance card which will be given to the chair by a deputy. Members of the public shall be permitted to address the county commission unless ruled out of order by the chair or denied the opportunity to speak by majority vote of the commissioner's present voting. Please note that as it pertains to public comment, our rules of order set a limit of no longer than three minutes when recognized by the chair. The chair may set a limit for discussion by the public of less than three minutes for each individual if circumstances require. Finally, to the members of the public, if you would like to express your pleasure or displeasure on a matter before the county commission, please do so by raising your thumb up or pointing it down as opposed to applause or other expressions of approval or disapproval. Disruptive members of the public are subject to removal from the commission chambers by the deputy sheriff. Thank you for your attention and in advance for your cooperation today.
Okay, thanks so much. I think we can go straight to item number one. Madam Parliament, can you really please read item number one? We did a roll call.
Item one is a resolution amending the fiscal year 2026 operating budget to reallocate funding consistent with all funding requirements on each department of government. This item requires the allocation and appropriation of fiscal year 2026 general fund dollars in the amount of $18,779,550 and having no net impact on adopted fiscal year 2026 operating budget, sponsored by Chairman Michael Whaley.
All right, thank you. Item one moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Thornton, Commissioner Mills?
Yes, I would like to move to amend, offer up a friendly amendment to this.
Okay.
I move to use the 12 million above the MOE and then the 6 million, that is the duplicative 3% raise to the sheriff's employees, and then the remaining balance be funded by the vacancy savings, and those vacancy savings will come before the commission before being used.
All right, that motion's been moved and properly seconded by Commissioner Wright. Any objection? I think let's just, Commissioner Mills, if you don't mind, we can try to just clarify, and if we can get Finance to come down. All right, so the motion by Commissioner Mills is to amend item one to remove the 12.2 million in additional increases that were proposed by the mayor in the FY26 budget, in addition to remove the duplicative salary funding that we approved last Monday to the sheriff's office, it's already included in the budget, and then to close the gap between what we approved on last Monday, and then that amount with vacancy savings that would come before this body to decide, to make sure that it's applied equitably. Okay, Commissioner Mills, is this, did I get it correctly?
Yes, and everything else is the same, including our amendments staying in and everything.
That's right, okay. And then Finance, can you give us the number on the vacancy savings that would be needed to close that gap?
Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance, the vacancy savings number will be $5,389,219.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, Commissioner Ford, good to you.
Thank you, Chair. Without violating attorney-client, I still question the veracity of this meeting, this meeting that started at almost 1:00. But due to our rules, and there have been at least two or three commissioners that have done this, I appreciate my colleague verbalizing what was stated and you reiterating what the CFO has stated, but I'm asking for this to be reduced to writing, so for transparency purposes, not just for us to have, but for all the people in the audience to have as well because it's going to affect their respective offices, and we do have a few other people who are constituents that are here that would like to make sure that the transparency is said, so that's my motion, I need for this to be reduced to writing.
Okay, I think we already do have the, those, that 12.2 million in an exhibit that everyone should have.
Was it passed out?
Yeah, I think we're...
Let me see if this satisfies my motion. Chair, is there anything else on here? Because they...
Sheriff item? So that 3% item stays the same, the vacancy savings number is...
Original write document? You're saying, I just want to make sure there's clarity.
Okay. Commissioner Ford, so you made a motion to...
They can type it up real quick.
Okay.
That's a motion, it requires a second.
Before the listening audience, I just wanted to state that it's very important that we maintain the administration of the mayor's maintenance of effort, which went into effect last year, because as we know, we have lost population since 2020, and this impacts, you know, as far as the property, tax revenue, as well as sales tax, et cetera. And so I want to ask on record, what is the current maintenance of effort for fiscal year 2026, and for the record, what was 25 MOE for the mayor's administration? And for the listening audience, while they're getting that information, this would impact future commissions who will be legally obligated to maintain the funding level of the mayor and the mayor's administration, and it doesn't look at the economic conditions. And I've also requested that, and I'll put it in writing, and I'm sending out to copy the commissioners as well, and send it to Attorney Iverson, because this commission asked for the State Comptroller's Office to give us situations where that we do not have to abide by the maintenance of effort, because there are long-term consequences. For example, it deletes reserves, it triggers credit rating downgrades, lead to midterm cuts, forced tax increases, et cetera. And so again, I'll put this in writing to our county attorney, so that she can then in turn send an email to Mon Power, so we can know, because for example, and I'll give you a quick example, with the school board, they also have a maintenance of effort, and so it can be reduced under certain circumstances, such as if the population of students decreases. And so we're facing a situation where it's very critical that we have all information. So now that I've said that, I believe you all found the information, I'll turn it over to either Director Thompson or Tipton.
Michael Thompson, Deputy CFO, Shelby County Government. Is it okay if we email you that information? It's actually a consolidated amount that we need to provide to you.
Okay, my concern, then, that's fine, but I just want to make sure that our maintenance of effort for the mayor has not increased. So for the record, has it maintained the same level as fiscal year 2025?
His maintenance of effort has not increased, has not increased.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you, sure, thank you. All right, so while we're getting Commissioner Mills' amendment written, I'm gonna just go to the comment cards. So if I call your name, and if you're, if you're a county employee, you can just state your title, and then you'll have three minutes. Judge Tarek Sugarman?
Yes, Tarek Sugarman, Juvenile Court Judge, here in Shelby County. We have three requests in our amendment. Let me make some point of clarification, though. The money's allotted to the County Department of Corrections for the transition is not in our budget, that's not part of our budget. What we requesting is first, an increase in magistrate pay. Our core magistrates, as you know, did not, have not had an increase in some period of time. They're hearing cases where the prosecutors and the public defenders who have received increases in pay are getting paid more than they are. Their responsibilities are to handle not only delinquency matters, but also civil matters, and in that regard, they have to be knowledgeable, not only in criminal laws, but also in civil laws. They are required, under their rules, to comply with the rules of juvenile procedure, criminal procedure, civil procedure, local rules, and Supreme Court rules. Their duties extend, and I would submit this, are greater than any other non-elected judicial officer in this county, and so it's vital that we keep those legacy appointees, magistrates, not only funded, but in positions where they feel valued. The second request is for an additional magistrate. We've been dealing with capacity issues since we've been back in our courtroom since this past September. And regarding capacity, our magistrates hear DNN cases, which are dependency neglect, custody and visitation, school advocacy, which is truancy matters, preliminary hearings, motions, and delinquency cases. We have to have an additional magistrate, now the mayor's included one, but we need two, and that would give us an increase of 212 cases per week with those two magistrates. The final request is that the county pay the portion of the Department of Human Services grant that our magistrates, our core magistrate, have to handle 30% of the child support cases. If the county pays that grant money, then those cases would go with our 4D magistrates, where strictly during, excuse me, during child support cases. It gives our core magistrates, of which there are six, the ability to handle additional dependency neglect cases, which is the second largest and next to child support of our dockets, and it would also give us additional capacity on termination from rights, on child support and child custody matters, as well as truancy matters. If we have those three positions funded, it'll cost the county about $713,564.88. It's a small amount to ask to keep our magistrates, the current ones we have, on staff, because we might lose some, to positions that are paying more money and take less qualifications than they do, and also to fund an additional magistrate spot, as well as take care of the 30% under the DHS grant. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Judge. Next up, we have Stephanie Hill. You're good? Okay, all right. Let's see, Clerk Eddie Jones, I think I saw him walk back in, yeah. Clerk Jones, you want to come down?
Clerk Eddie Jones, 140 Adams, probate court clerk. It's very difficult for me to understand what's happening when I don't have stuff to look at, okay? So I hadn't had anything to look at, been dealing with a lot of stuff, and then I'm hearing about it. And so I just asked, I said, well, did they pass out any kind of exhibits that I could look at, see how it is impacting my office? And I'm pretty sure all the other clerks and other electeds feel the same way. So I don't really know what's happening to my office, other than what got passed. And so I see a resolution that you are amending, but I don't see what's being amended. And for me to stand here and say, or make an argument, I can't, because I've not seen what's actually happening, and I think everybody that came over, that will probably speak, have the same feelings. So I understand, you've already passed a budget, you got it passed, now you're amending something. A lot of us lost a lot out of our office since that was much needed, even the small amount that was taken from our office, $30,000. That was taken from our office, but it was taken out of my operation and maintenance. Trust me when I say this, everything that I'm using in the O&M that y'all have approved, I can guarantee you when that fiscal year is up, it's probably not much more than $3,000 left there. And if you take that away, that means I'll be back before y'all, because you're taking away funding for materials, for things that we need in that office, ink cartridges, all of that, if you take away from that, now I gotta deal with my judges, because they're gonna be like, Clerk, why don't we have these, why don't we have these folders, why don't we have these jackets? I gotta tell them, well, it's just not enough money in the budget. $30,000 out of my office may seem small to this body, but it is a woeful impact in my office. There's no way I can operate with that, and so what I'm asking, and I don't know what you pass, because I don't have a document that I can see, is that you put that $30,000 back there, or I'll be, I'll have to come back to you all for it, because we won't be able to survive through the FY26 budget year. And trust me, the people over in Finance, they make sure I don't get too much money in my office. So I have to manage that, and I have done that.
Okay, all right. I actually have something I can help you a little bit with this, that just may help clarify it, and this is based on the amendment that's on the floor right now, that we're gonna make sure it's all in writing, and you understand. So what is being proposed is to, one, restore in its entirety the offset, the cuts that were proposed on Monday, okay, that exhibit, which you're right, in your office, it was about $29,000, okay? Instead of that, what is being proposed is to cut the additional 12.2 million that the mayor added into the budget, in addition to removing the extra 6 million that this body voted to add as an additional amount in the sheriff's budget, and then the rest is the five, about 5 million in vacancy savings. So, so just so you understand, what's happening is that amount is now, we're saying we're gonna put it back in, right, the amounts that were cut through the amendment proposal from Commissioner Wright. But in lieu of that, the alternative that is being proposed now is a combination of three things. One, the cut of about 12.2 million that was in, that the mayor proposed as additional spending in FY26, right? The 6.3 million that we added that was going to the sheriff, and then about 5 million in vacancy savings. Okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you, thank you, Clerk Jones. We'll go to Clerk Tammy Sawyer.
Thank you, Chairman. Clerk Tamara Sawyer, General Sessions Court clerk. I appreciate that explanation, because I came with huge concerns, as one could imagine. With the budget that was passed last week, my office was going to experience almost $560,000 worth of cuts. With what I understand now is being amended, those cuts will be about $91,000. Let me just share a little bit about what's going on. We, our General Sessions Court, is the largest court operation in Tennessee. Everyone who enters in through the civil or criminal justice system touches General Sessions in some way or another. The news has expressed concerns about 201, and we just seen recently how people are waiting so long to be processed that they're sitting in chairs. But you also have to recognize that we are also woefully understaffed in General Sessions, in the courtroom, and at the sheriff's department. So if I have two people who can work each 24-hour shift, that means that as we are in the middle of what is called saturation weekends throughout the summer, and so arrests are on the rise, the sheriff has shared as well how TBI and other entities use our jail as a holding place without reimbursing the sheriff's department or the county for space or for the cost of that. So it's not just that we are holding people arrested in Memphis and Shelby County, we are also holding detainees for other administrations. We had a situation such as that this week. When that situation arose, the person who was being held for TBI was held in jail for extra two, three days because the paperwork was lost between systems. Our tubing system, which transfers the paperwork from MPD and Shelby County Sheriff's Office to our judicial commissioners, it's currently broken. I have a dinosaur of an office, and I have 160 civil service people who bend over backwards every day to make it work, but that is not enough for the judicial system. The Tennessee Bureau of Investigation has called and emailed my office about the swiftness of our ability to process the paperwork and get court cases moving. The Tennessee Association of Courts has done the same. We have, we're one of the only courts in the big four cities that is still using paper and pen to process our systems. Commissioner Ford was correct, we do have $150,000 in DP funds, so we are able to cover some of the upgrades, but we need so much more. We have attorneys reaching out to Attorney Iverson, Attorney Smith, almost every day, threatening to sue our division because we are handling and processing paperwork by hand. $500,000 would have decimated us and put us in a legal situation. $90,000 is going to hurt us just as well, and so I'd like you to reconsider withdrawing any funds from General Sessions, because we are understaffed and we are underfunded, and we are in a situation that's going to be a legal situation if we cannot upgrade our systems and be completely staffed. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, Clerk Sawyer. All right, next up, we have Amber Sherman.
Well, so my name is Amber Sherman, my address is 6070 North Belgrove Cove. I have a lot of concerns with the lack of transparency within this meeting and with even calling the meeting. The public wasn't notified about the meeting, no one could find it anywhere. I looked at the website multiple times this weekend and could not find it, and so I think that it's inappropriate to be having the meeting in the first place, but if you are gonna have the meeting, you have to also provide accurate information. Why does only the county commissioners have the exact budget modifications you're talking about? The exhibit that y'all showed that says there are budget modifications for $4.5 million and vacancies here and there, they don't say any information about what those vacancies are, so it looks extremely shady that you won't provide basic information to people who have made time to come to the meeting that you were almost two hours late for, and you can't give us just basic information printed out of what you're actually trying to change? I think the least you could do is provide us with that info so we even know what's happening, because right now, it looks like y'all are moving with whatever you discussed in the bag, and most people out here said that y'all were out there in the room discussing the budget, which is also a violation of the Open Meetings Act, so I would like clarity on that, too, but the least you could do is explain to us what you're actually doing, because right now, you're kind of talking to each other and moving how you want with motions you discussed already ahead of time, instead of explaining what you're actually cutting and why. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Regina Newman, trustee Newman.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, this is Regina Newman, County trustee. Last Monday night, budget was passed with Commissioner Wright's final amendment cutting O&M budget lines in most departments. Most of the electeds were not in the room to comment or see the detail, but the administration was in the room. Finance, Budget, the county attorney's office were in the room, and Commissioner Wright said that his amendment had been discussed with the mayor, who had no objection. Now, a week later, the administration raises objections, claims of illegality not raised by attorneys last week, and they essentially want to reopen the budget and have you restore their original budget, and I'm operating off what we sent on Friday, said, restore it by further cannibalizing all the other departments through increased salary restrictions. We don't even have the detail to know which departments or how much of a cut is proposed in salaries. The trustee's office FY26 budget request included reducing our salary restriction so we could actually operate, recruit, and hire. Our salary restriction has increased over 200% in the last few years, that is a fact, but none of our requests for FY26 was included or even mentioned in the mayor's proposed 26 budget, and when we brought an amendment directly to you two weeks ago, it was the only one that day with a valid funding source. I thank you for passing that amendment. I ask you now not to reopen the issue of salary restrictions and cannibalize our office and others by increasing recurring salary restrictions by another, today, $5.3 million to provide non-recurring O&M funds. I had no plans to sue for the O&M decrease, but would be back before you to get it, because as of last Monday morning, what was left in my budget was 15,000, not 360. All of the electeds have statutory duties to perform, the constitutional officers have constitutional duties to perform, our offices have had to run to make the county work. We do not work for the mayor, we work for the public. Tennessee law gives us the right to sue if we are not funded in sufficient levels to perform our required functions for the public and the county, especially when it comes to personnel costs. If this resolution is entertained and passed, the trustee's office has reached that tipping point. Thank you.
All right, thank you, trustee Newman. Corey Handy?
Yes, my name is Corey Handy, current address, 2333 Bartlett Oaks. I'm here to talk about the allocation of funds for the skate park in District 5, 12. I apologize, I'm nervous, I've never spoken in front of anything like this, so, but I want to say this, I don't know anything about politics, I really don't know what a lot of y'all do. What I do know is that area is heavy in crime, and it's mostly because the youth have nothing to do. I'm actually a life coach for Memphis Allies. A lot of y'all probably heard of our organization, we work on trying to decrease gun violence, and I was part of that mass shooting that happened in our building. The consensus above among a lot of our participants is they have nothing to do at all, so that they result to doing crime, stealing cars, shooting people, because they have nowhere to go. They join these gangs because they don't have anyone to talk to, they have no sense of community. Skating has done that for a lot of the kids in the Raleigh area and the ones that go to Toby. I just got custody of my 14-year-old son. He had no friends, nowhere to hang out at, he decided to start skating. He now has a community of people that he can talk to and relate to, be somewhere to go, a healthy environment, and not just choosing to be water boys or choosing to go to gangs. I sit back there, and like I said, I don't know what a lot of this is, it's my first time in this building, but I see us throwing around, you know, big money, $18 million, 12 million, 6 million, y'all took $30,000 from me. Has anyone said what we're gonna do for these kids? For the youth, for this city that I love, we have to do something. So I'm not talking to y'all as commissioners, judges, or whoever y'all are, I'm talking to y'all as people, as MFI'ants, as parents. We have to do something, and we gotta start today.
All right, thank you so much. Benji Smith?
You heard Corey say just a moment ago is that there's really nothing there. I want to speak specifically about the budget and making sure that this small amount of $223,000 remains in the budget and gets fully funded, appropriated, expensed to the bulk of the things that happen. I apologize. It's not gonna make a difference to the bulk of the budget. What it will do is it'll make an enormous difference to the children. We've been talking to kids in that area and kids across the city that are thrilled that a beginner-level skate park is going to be built. here, parents and kids. They're not able to do that. Those same kids are not able to necessarily travel from one park to another because there is no way, there is no public transit available to them. They are stuck with what they have within a mile or two of their home. There's nothing there. Nothing there. I'm asking that the commission make sure that this money gets funded, it gets put in the bank, and allow Spawn Ranch to continue with what they started. When I talk to kids about politics stuff and about coming to the county commission and ask the teenagers if they would come and support the ones that drive, they say no, because nobody listens. It's incredibly difficult for me standing up here right this second because I can't, and I'm a pretty good entertainer, but I can't even hold eye contact with all of you. Imagine how these kids feel. There's a reason why voter turnout is so low. It's because promises get made and they get broken repeatedly. This is about children, this is a clean project, this is not anything that anybody can get upset about. It's just something that is situated in a barren area of the county. The children need more to do. Please fund this money.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Smith. Next up is Fred Dorsey. Mr. Dorsey.
Fred Dorsey, Circuit Court Clerk's Office, 140 Adams Avenue. It's quite obvious to me that we're not going to be able to negotiate any of our budgets. Circuit Court Clerk's was cut $81,000, and this is not going to be where we're going to be able to do it. So my question is, what is the window of opportunity that we have to submit amendment resolutions based on our analysis of the budget and the cuts which we have not received yet? I mean, that's for clarity.
Okay, all right, Mr. Dorsey, do you have anything further? And then I'm certainly happy to clarify.
That's it.
Okay. So as I mentioned earlier, when Clerk Jones came up, the action that is on the floor right now is to restore the cuts that this body made last Monday in its entirety. Okay? So that was around 21 million or so, okay? You were included in that.
Yes.
In order to balance the budget, the alternative proposal that is in front of us, it has three components. One is to, is to, for the time being, to cut the additional 12.2 million that the mayor proposed in the budget. Okay, that's one piece. The other piece is by removing the additional 6.3 million that was duplicative to the sheriff's office that was intended to do the 3% raise and the minimum salary that we voted on for all county employees. And then the third component is an increase to the vacancy savings of about 5 million. That is what is being proposed. Okay, so the net benefit is that you are receiving, if this passes, you are receiving back those funds that were cut, but we are making some additional sort of modifications, three components, that equals that same amount.
Two things, so we, for understanding purpose, so the original cuts of 21 million have been reduced down to 18 million?
So it was around 21 million?
That's right.
Okay. So this, this, the amendment that's being proposed would restore all of it.
Okay.
Okay, so now we've restored it, but we still have a unbalanced budget because we approved other expenditures. Right? So in order to balance the budget, what we are doing instead of that 21 million is reducing the amount that the mayor proposed in additional spending in the FY26 budget, a list of around 12.2 million. But that doesn't cover the whole amount, so that we need to have these additional two components, which are the sheriff's office, the duplicative funding, and then also a vacancy savings.
Right. Last point. Are you saying then, when you restore the $21 million that you cut, the proposal date is looking, that I'm looking at, is 18 million?
Yeah, I understand that. So there's an amendment to that exhibit right now on the floor. It's, it's been asked to be reduced to writing, so that's what we're doing. But that is what it will show. Okay, so it's, what's in the system now is being proposed to be amended with what I just stated.
So the only way we'll know from the Circuit Court Clerk's cut are the 81,000 that you put back in temporarily. But how that's going to affect us, is that a part of the 12.3 from the mayor's side of it?
Right, there is, we do have a list of all those items, right? Okay. All right, next up, Alicia Lindsay.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak before you this afternoon. So while it's important to have a motion to reduce Commissioner Mills' item into writing, it's also important to have an Exhibit A that spells out what the county's general fund budget is and the specific departments that support it. For example, in each of the proposed budget documents that were listed online on May 21st, June 5th, and June 16th, they all included an Exhibit A, and that Exhibit A also had supporting documentations for each department. So the sheriff's office is listed, and it had a net of about $204 million. Does Exhibit remain the same throughout all of those iterations? May 21st, June 5th, June 16th, and again on June 23rd? So today, as we're considering additional items, it's really important for elected officials to be able to walk away from this meeting knowing what their budget is. But to simply say you're removing an item that's duplicative, how do we know that it's duplicative? We don't have an Exhibit A that supports that. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Heidi Kuhn. Okay, yeah, she's the last one, then we'll go back to you again.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Heidi Kuhn, Criminal Court Clerk. I want to speak on the proposed amendment for the cuts. The, I had originally requested 142,374 for three technology advancements that the mayor had cut in half, excuse me, for 71,185. Those are now in the proposed cuts with this new amendment. And I want to just say that this is really going to be a detriment to what Clerk Sawyer and I are trying to do in regard to the technology. I know that Commissioner Ford at one time had stated that we should use DP funds. I think you all received an email stating that I could not do that because I had already exhausted all of those funds, and utilizing DP funds is not sustainable for the next few years. This is something that we were trying to do because of what the comptroller had requested with data transparency, which is going to assist with reducing some of the crime, its data transparency, as well as creating strategic plans. I have got to have this 72,000 in order to create these technological advancements. You all received the email that I was going to come back last Monday and request this money, but I, to be fully funded, but I actually found some funding that I was able to utilize to make sure that I could increase the technology within our office, but I'm going to need this 71,000. So I am respectfully requesting that you do not cut that from the Criminal Court Clerk's office. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Clerk Kuhn. Commissioner Thorne, you're in the queue. I know Commissioner Ford had a question as well, so Commissioner Thorne, I'll go to you.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of clarifying questions. So I hear the electeds asking for information. Is someone actually on task to provide that information, or is, I don't know if we're waiting on that?
We're working to make sure that the amendment is very clear with what's, it is what I just stated a couple of times, but that's, want to make sure everyone's super clear on that.
And just for clarity, I know that Chief Lindsay talked about Exhibit A and supporting documents. Those will be provided today to them?
So the Exhibit A that we approved on Monday was the list of all the different cuts that were proposed by Commissioner Wright. On our list of amendments that we added were two items, well, actually three items for the sheriff's office. One of them was setting the minimum salary that we set across the board. The other one was the 3% raise, and the other one was an AFSMI amount that was negotiated. That amount stays in it. The two that are being removed are the ones that were already included in the broader proposed budget, which is...
So is all this going to be in writing today for them?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what we're, we're writing out right now.
Okay, next. And then I've heard figures of around 30,000, 81,000, 71,000, 90,000, just for clarity for them, in what we're proposing right now on the floor, will those be included in the budget, or will they need to come back to be able to restore in those amounts?
So most of the amounts that were referenced today by the, by some of the other elected officials were amounts that were, that we already voted to cut last week. And so what this is doing is restoring all of that, but it is making different cuts that are overall less. But I think one thing we should also say is that if you have a specific request, those can be brought at any time to amend the budget. What we need to do today is pass a balanced budget. Once the balanced budget is passed, as if, as we do every year, we can consider additional requests that may be needed.
And so the additional requests to be considered would come from the fund balance?
Well, not necessarily.
Okay. Can we state for the record, I know that we've said that the MOE is being reset to fiscal year '25 to finance, can you just say the figure that was set in fiscal year '25, and then also the figure that will be for fiscal year '26?
Michael Thompson, Deputy CFO. As previously requested, I will provide the information to you all via email.
So we're not, we're going to say that we've crunched the numbers to figure out the figure, but we can't say it today? That doesn't make sense to me. So there are parts of this that I feel uncomfortable with. We've, we're making these decisions, saying that we've come to conclusive numbers, but we won't actually state them before we take a vote. So I, we need to get the figure said. Just saying that we're going to go back to amendments of FAFR without actually saying the figure is problematic to me. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. I think that's what we're doing right now. Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, and I agree with you. Before we pass the policy document known as a $1.6 billion budget saying, "I'll come back after you vote," no, that's not going to work. But as we're getting the information that's going to be reduced to writing, Chair, I'll reserve my questions on that when we get what's in writing so that lay terms can be articulated on record on what our base or starting point is with what Commissioner Mills brought. So Ms. Lindsay, I need you, you brought up something, I just want to get some clarity. You brought up a couple of things that happened during a budget. So you brought up a few things, and I just want to go back over them real quick. If I misspeak on something, please correct me. So you brought up that the mayor's administration posted versions of the budget document, I think you said, May 21st, the 5th of June, and the 16th of June. And you talked about how the exhibits are in the back of, the exhibits that are in the back were exactly the same. I think you, I think either the budget chair or another commissioner stated that the mayor's budget was different from what the elected officials presented. And I think that our finance person who was sitting in the back somewhere was supposed to compile a spreadsheet. I don't know if that spreadsheet happened, but I know that if you look at particular salaries, I want to say it's in 5102, for the sheriff, that figure, I'm assuming did not change from any of those iterations. You can let me know if that's the case or not. So I don't know if there was an amendment or a motion that was going to address that discrepancy. You could only follow what was stated in committee or subcommittee. And my major question is, if the funding was provided, how did that happen? Because something that I believe that we have the latitude to do as commissioners is to amend the proposed budget without any changes. I don't think that the executive branch has the latitude to do so. Because what I don't want is, like, for instance, you bring all the documentation and evidence saying that I see a duplication, but then we hear from the administration, two sentences, no, it's not, and then unfortunately, some of the people on my body go with the two lines instead of the documents after documents after documents. So could you reiterate as far as the budget documents from those three days? Was there a spreadsheet compiled? And as far as any other instructions that were given? Because when we do get this document, Chair, that's being reduced to writing, one of the items that deals with the sheriff exclusively, I'm asking Ms. Lindsay these questions so that I can go back and ask about what was reduced to writing. So I hope Ms. Lindsay knows where I'm going with that.
Alicia Lindsay, Chief Administrative Officer, Shelby County Sheriff's Office. Thank you, Commissioner Ford, for the question. To reiterate, there were three different versions of the mayor's proposed budget posted on 5/21, May 21st, June 5th, and June 16th. Each of those versions included an Exhibit A, which has the general fund, education fund, debt service, enterprise fund, and so on. The schedule also included a list of all the departments so that you could see the sources and use of funds. So for the sheriff's office, well, you can look at the total. The total was 542 million for the general fund, and it remained that way through each iteration of the version of the budget, even on June 23rd, last Monday. So we presented our budget to the mayor's administration back in May. We came before this body on April 23rd with our presentation. I think at that time, Commissioner Chairwoman Clay Bibbs indicated that there was an issue, that the budgets didn't align with what was presented by the elected officials and what the mayor proposed, and that in order to cure that or to bring our amendments before the additional budget subcommittee meetings, which were June 4th, June 11th, and June 18th. So because our salary number in these documents, if you go back to the sheriff's fund, look at account 5102, of this year, that does not include a 3% increase, that does not include the minimum pay of $40,501, and it did not include the AFSMI MUI. I've worked with Director Thompson over the weekend, and we ironed out quite a few things, but my fear is that we walk away from this meeting again today, and we don't have it in writing in an Exhibit A, not just Commissioner Mills' resolution or any other motion that may be substituted, but we don't have an exhibit that spells out what is the total for the general fund, and then what is the total sources and uses for each other department. So in the proposed budget document, the net sheriff's budget was $204 million. Working with Director Thompson over the weekend, that number is now... I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but it's around $206 million. So as a representative of an elected official office, we really need to know what our budget is, not just the motions that are being made today spelled out in an exhibit, but an actual exhibit of the adopted budget. Thank you. Commissioner Ford, are there any other questions?
Yeah, I think we're good, I think it's getting printed off right now. Chief Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things, and then I have a question from the administration as well. The administration proposed in this FY26 budget $12,232,000 because the electics and all the other people who came for us through our budget modifications had a total request of about $27 million. And we understood that this body would not be willing to go that far, so we did half of those requests in budget modifications, which meant that while those submitted budgets, so those FY26 budgets that were proposed and passed in FY26... of those FY26 budgets that were proposed and passed in FY25, every elected official and every, every entity in Shelby County government was funded at that level. The request was extra funding. And so we wanted to make sure that that's clear and on the record. The second thing, question I have to you is, on, I believe, August the first, no, October one, the administration will begin assuming responsibility of the Youth Justice and Education Center. In this modification, we ask that we be funded six million dollars to cover the cost of that transition. Your budget amendment today says that that six million dollars will not be available for us on, right now, October first. Our question is, and I want to make sure I hear it, that you're requesting us to come back at a later time to adjust this budget so that we can then transition the division of corrections to the supervision of the Youth Justice and Education Center from the Shelby County Sheriff's Office?
Yes. Yes, I think you, you, the administration, and anyone else would have to come for a budget modification request.
Thank you.
Added together, that Commissioner Mills brought up verbally?
That's the, that's the new base. And the reason is because the exhibit that's loaded into the system did not fully restore all of those cuts. So we want to make sure that the cuts that were made, particularly to the clerks, were restored from what was approved on Monday, so that adds that additional three million or so.
Okay. And we'll see that when they bring that out, okay? And this does not modify, what, eliminate anything that was passed in, I want to say, the F, the fifty, whatever that is?
E, fifty-two E.
Fifty-two E, okay.
That's correct.
And I know that the three percent was one of those items, so I'm assuming now there's no argument on a, okay?